Let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and we'll call the uh July seventeenth planning commission meeting to order. Uh everyone, would you do a roll call?
Commissioner Stall.
Here.
Commissioner Sager.
Here.
Chair Wheeler.
Here.
Commissioner Hartwig.
I looked and he's here.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
And we should have Commissioner Carpenter joining us soon, and it looks like Commissioner Hawks is absent.
Okay. Uh first item of business, we have the approval of the June twentieth. Twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
I'm I'm going to approve the minutes of June twentieth.
I'll second it. Do we have any discussion? All right, no, no discussion on that. So all those who pay, please raise your right hand.
Yep.
Motion carries by both. Uh next up, we have commission business, which we have none. So let's get right into public hearings, conditional use twenty twenty four dash zero one dash C U. At three twenty five South Broadway Street. Uh Alan, would you like to present?
Um I think Larissa from Winterford Planning is going to be presenting this one.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. Yes.
All right, let's get started. So we are looking at the conditional use application. Two zero two four dash oh one dash C U for Broadway Street Learning Center. The applicant is the Estacada School District and the contact is Mike Wire, Executive Director of Operations. And the property is owned by Kyle and Alicia Helm. It's located on three twenty five South Broadway Street. And the proposal is for a conditional use to utilize the point one one acre lot and existing building as an alternative learning center and school for high school students and occasional evening classes for members of the public. And we received comments from the city engineer, public works director, and the fire marshal. So the property in question fronts up Broadway Street, which is classified as a major collector roadway. And it intersects nearby to the north with Southwest Third Avenue, and it served at the back with a public alley and it is already developed with a one story commercial building and connected to water and sewer. The site located down here is under a mile south from the Estacada High School. And it has a downtown comprehensive plan designation and zone. It is also located in the Estacada Downtown and Riverside area plan and school uses are conditional in this zone. And this is a view of the existing building, both from South Broadway and then also you can see the back of the building at that alley from Southwest Third Avenue. So the proposal is for a school and community center use, the school being called Deep Creek Learning Academy. The occupying hours are eight A M. to three P M. normal school hours. And the applicant notes that they would like to hold occasional evening classes, but um further detail on that wasn't specified in the application. The school would have a capacity of fifty students and they predict having four staff. And there are no proposed alterations to the site or to the building exterior. This is one of the submitted drawings of within the building, note that the north arrow faces downward, so the main entrance out to Broadway is here on your left. And then the other entrance to the public alley is over on the right. And you can see as the key says, the red walls are indicating new construction, so they'd like to put in two classrooms and more of an open concept element, so that would contribute to the alternative learning environment. And the building takes up the entire point one one acre lot. There are no proposed alterations to the site or existing building, uh except for on and oning replacement and signage. But those are not a part of this review. Oh, and the school bus loading plan is for students to meet up at the high school and then ride the bus to the site. Load and unload in that alley at the rear and then return to the high school at the end of the day. And the applicant says that this is meant to prevent additional traffic of students being dropped off and picked up downtown. Also, students and staff may choose to transport themselves independently. So the conditional use criteria are reviewed thoroughly in the staff report. Generally, staff finds that these criteria can be met with recommended conditions of approval, which we'll discuss further in the presentation. One of the elements that's in the staff report that we didn't include in this presentation is talking about the downtown zone requirements, which for the most part have to do with new development and the downtown design standards, which don't apply in this situation because there's no exterior alterations and no site improvements again. So for clarity, we're going to jump a little around um uh not necessarily following the order of the staff report. So if you are following along, this section is on page thirteen of the staff report, but the standard was one of the main topics flagged in the review. Uh staff and the applicant have met a couple of times to discuss and to visit the site. And I'll read it in full, but essentially the standard is meant for schools with a capacity of fifty or more students, so it applies to this proposal. The existing conditions for the site keep them from meeting the standard. At the same time, it's not a typical school. So it reads passenger loading, a driveway designated for continuous forward flow of passenger vehicles for the purpose of loading and unloading children shall be located on the site of any school having a capacity of greater than twenty five students. Because the site is fully occupied by the existing building, they can't provide a driveway for the student unloading when loading on the site. Uh the proposed plan has a drop off area in the public alley, which can't meet the definition of an onsite driveway. Planning staff find that the use can't meet the development standard, but would be a good candidate for a variance to the standard. Um the reasoning for that being that we notified the agencies, the city engineer, public works and fire marshal about this plan. They didn't have concerns from their end. This isn't a typical school use and existing conditions prevent them from meeting that standard. And they have an alternative plan that keeps the loading and unloading off of the main roadways. At this time, the applicant has not applied for a variance. The school bus plan details were supplemental materials, not included in the notice for this hearing. So surrounding property owners have not been noticed officially about the fact that the standard can't be met. Uh therefore, we recommend a condition of approval that the applicant receive a variance to the standard. Um we'll continue to talk about some of the other elements of that plan and how they relate to criteria. So jumping to looking at pedestrian access. The standards apply to exhibit activity centers and schools. Broadly, they require that primary entrances have pedestrian walkways connecting to adjacent streets that are direct, uninterrupted, and safe. The main entrance is located on the uh for the front on South Broadway. So there's existing sidewalks there and the agencies that provide the comments didn't have any concerns. If we were only talking about the entrance on Broadway, the application would meet the standards outright. However, because the proposed school bus plan has students accessing the building from the rear regularly, we evaluated the conditions at the back. And staff finds that the conditions of the alley and the back entrance are sufficient to meet the standards, but only if the back entrance is solely used by kids entering and exiting directly from the bus. And so the idea being that if students come and go from the back entrance to access the nearby sidewalks, for example, the conditions of the alley can't meet the same standards. So these conditions are ones that relate to several code standards. Um these up above here are the ones we just talked about. These ones from sixteen eighty eight have to do with the actual conditional use standards in terms of suitability of the site for the use and impact on surrounding properties. Um and staff feel that these can be met with conditions. So condition of approval three is that prior to receiving occupancy certificate, they must receive a variance approval following the typical notice standards requiring a oh two standard requiring a driveway for loading and unloading students onsite. Uh the applicant has not applied for variance again at this time, so the school bus plan has not yet gone through the regular review and noticing the applicant is naturally aiming for the school to be operational by the beginning of the school year. Therefore, we worded this in a way that if they chose, they would be allowed to get building permits and start that internal construction work without this variance, but they would still require the variance to actually use the site. And staff is also willing to help write the rationale and findings for that variance, given the fact that we have talked about this a lot and reviewed it internally. And I'll go back here. So conditions of approval four and five. First, signage must be installed on the inside and outside of the rear door, clearly stating that it must only be used by students loading on and off the school bus. And school buses must enter the public alley from Southwest Fourth Avenue and exit onto Southwest Third Avenue, stopping to load students alongside the building. And this is just a graphic depicting that. So these relate to the pedestrian walkway standards and enforcement of the use of the back door and bus activity would be difficult. So these conditions serve as requirements, but also evidence that the city has addressed the issue. And part of the rationale for the bus direction condition is just that going this direction, going north, the school bus doors would be on the side of the back door rather than on the opposite side, so students would have to walk around the bus stop. And then we're going to jump back to the parking standards quickly, which is page seventeen on the stack report, but um first, they're not proposing any additional parking. There's no requirements for minimum parking in the downtown zone, and none of the agencies were concerned about parking, so staff didn't find a reason why this condition couldn't be met. For bike parking as a school use with two classrooms, the minimum bike parking required is for long term spaces and for short term spaces. And the definitions of those and the other standards for how what the bike parking should look like is in the relevant code section. Uh there is one existing rack out front in this photo that provides two short term spaces, so we recommend a condition of approval that they provide for long term and two short term spaces, meeting the standards of the section. So given that with the recommended conditions of approval, the application can meet the standards for conditional use in downtown Estacada. And for a school use, staff recommends approval of the application with those proposed conditions, which are fully detailed in the staff report on page eighteen. There are five proposed conditions. We have read through three, four, and five. The first one simply just states the specific conditional uses that would be approved. The second has to do with that bike parking. So next steps being public comments and like commission questions and discussion, and then your motion to approve, approve the changes or deny with findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Playing commission, any questions at this point in time? I have two. Uh Larissa, you had mentioned when we were talking about access that if the school decides to pick students up in the front, the variance is not required. Did I hear that right?
Um, that is not quite right. So if the school does not apply for the variance, then staff would not recommend approval because essentially even parking or loading or unloading on the street is still not meeting the standard of having that driveway onsite. So in terms of giving a variance to the standard, having that um that loading zone happen in the alley is a great alternative because it's not on the street.
Yes, I have. I have a bunch of thoughts that hit me. Um the other business, yeah, the other businesses, they know that this is gonna jam up all day long for whatever parking spots are are available. I mean, we're not taking away from the phone company or any of the other businesses.
So the elements of the this application that were given, that were noticed with the required timelines were everything except for what's specific to the location of the school bus plan. So the fact that they aren't proposing additional parking and that students will mostly be taking the school bus, but they could choose to transport themselves, that all is part of what was noticed already, and this application didn't recert receive any complaints or comments from the public.
So yeah, everybody was noticed.
Okay, here, that's that was number one. Number two, so the only loading and offloading would be in the alley then?
Correct.
By bus? And one directional, so the door is towards the building?
Mm hmm.
That makes sense. Okay, I I'm agreeable with that. Um is there any other semi trucks are used in that alley or whatever that could plug it up that may cause you a great deal, a great deal of grief?
Yeah, that's a good question. We that wasn't a part of this review. I think that would have been an opportunity for people of from the public or surrounding businesses to possibly comment on that. Part of the reason that we're recommending a variance and going through that process is because uh people haven't been specifically noticed about the plan to unload and load in the alley, so legally, it's advisable to have that option, just in case anyone did have anything to say about it, but in the meantime, we didn't receive comments from surrounding business owners about it, and maybe that is a good discussion amongst you all as the planning commission. How you think about that?
I learned the first howd in Hipner. Um it it it's just a it's just a thought that comes across that it only takes one person to plug up a whole street. And I'm real happy that we're not going to be double parking out on Broadway. To uh um I guess I want to see it work, but I just didn't want to offend every neighbor in the neighborhood. They they've all got their own parking lots and made space around their own buildings.
Yeah.
So anyway, the other thought was, is that back door going to be open all day long? And is there an S R O officer that would sometimes be present on this building?
We can have the applicant speak to that directly.
Okay.
Uh with regards to the S R O, I think the door. Is it sit, you wanna? Uh why don't we, why don't we have the applicant speak to that?
Sure. Well, then I'll get it down to one more. Well, no, let's get him up here.
Well, let's let's get your questions out there.
Okay.
Cut down the public hearing and go into our planning and then go into public hearing.
Let's see, let me look down this. You got that one, you got that one. Yes, sir. Back door. But with fifty students, this only has, this building has one or two bathrooms in it?
I think two on the plan.
Does have two on the plan? Okay, it's not something they're having to build after the fact. Okay, cool. Cool. And the the age of these kids are just really young or?
High school.
Oh, this is a high school alternative?
Alternative high school.
Okay, that now makes lots more sense. All right, all right.
Tara, I heard you pipe up there. We'll get to you here in just a second as soon as. Richard, you got anymore?
Um, no, that's that's that got them all.
All right, Tara, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just said a couple of questions, maybe there are applicant questions, I'm not sure, but the um so there there will also be staff parking presumably. Um, and I was wondering where the staff parking and where, I mean, say, ten of these students decide to drive themselves on any given day. That's like fifteen parking spots. Where where would the the that kind of parking be handled?
I can just talk about how that's handled in the code super briefly, and the applicant can talk specifically if they have anything more to say, but because the downtown zone doesn't have a minimum parking, uh that still applies in this case, so they're not required per the code to provide parking. There is some diagonal street parking out front, um and then street parking on third as well. But uh it is within the planning commission's rights to apply additional conditions of approval. Uh but it would be difficult to decide because there is no room to put additional parking on the site.
Cause it it, I mean, it seems like the reason there's not conditional, or there's a reason there's not parking requirements on some of the other businesses is that they're not there's nothing, there's no other business there that's going to have like fifteen cars or more, potentially more attached to it where the cars are going to be there the whole day, just parked on the street, and that sounds like a potentially very significant jam up of the downtown parking um for anybody trying to use the other businesses. Um, and the other, the other question I had was if the, is this, and maybe it's for the um applicant, if this is a considered a permanent space for this? Or if this is something sort of temporary that they're doing until they can find something that's not on a retail street in downtown, or what what's the, do we know what the plan is for it?
Yeah, we can definitely direct those at the applicant.
Okay, and then I I mean, then I guess my question, this is for staff. How it it's said in the report that this was be considering to increase downtown activity, but bussing kids in and out is not real, it's just increasing activity at that one building, but it doesn't. Is there a way that that you guys are seeing this as positively impacting other businesses around it?
Yeah, so the thought here was that it's increasing visits to downtown, specifically to this use. Uh because they are high schoolers and also because the applicant proposes potentially having some evening classes. Um there is potential for the students to interact with the businesses nearby. I think top of mind is restaurants nearby at lunchtime or before or after school. And then the applicant also notes that one of the benefits, at least for them of being downtown, is the potential of being able to interact with local businesses or internships or unique opportunities.
Okay.
Do we have any other question? Or actually, Tara, you have any other questions?
Uh sorry, no.
Okay, thank you. Uh looks like we have one more here, Scott.
Has anybody uh actually tried to put a bus down that alley? Have we tried that?
It's not an eighty six passenger bus, it's a short bus.
Oh, a small bus, okay, a little smaller. Okay, I was just, I was just curious about that. Um, so far as the way I look at this thing is I I look at, you know, fifty students in there, it'll have some impact on the on the local businesses around it, so far as commerce. In a good way and in a bad way, unfortunately, it just kind of goes with both ways, but if any of you have ever been around a high school with a grocery store somewhere close to it, at lunchtime, it gets a little crazy. And you're going to see some movement there. Um parking, parking's an issue there. I don't, I don't know what the might think about the the school somehow limiting that. I don't know if that's within your purview, or tell them, hey, take the short bus in, guys. You're parking in the school parking lot, you know, and just not let them come. Um, I think those things would be worth thinking about. Um, for the space itself, though, I'm, if it works for them, great.
Yeah.
Right. Do we have any other questions? Uh take them now? Comments?
Well, this is be a question. Do the students already pay for their own parking at the high school? Okay.
I don't have the best of it, the applicant might.
Let's do this. It sounds like we got a handful of questions for the applicant. So let's uh shut down the planning commission meeting, and we're going to open the planning or the public hearing portion of the meeting. I'm going to read a statement about evidence, and then I'll have the applicant come to the mic and introduce themselves. So uh an issue which may be the basis for appeal to city council must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final evidentiary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford the city council and other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter, or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the city council and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the city council on that issue. Would the applicant please come to the mic and introduce yourself and we'll uh ask you some questions.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Ware, Executive Director of Operations and Finance for the Estacada School District.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, Richard, since you had the first one, why don't you oh, is the back door going to be locked?
Yeah, the back, both doors will always be locked. They'll be on on access control security system, so they'll always be locked, and they'll be only accessible by key card.
Common sense.
Yes, sir.
They can get out, but we can't get in.
Yes, we gotta do, gotta be that way.
And then uh S R O presence?
S R O, yes, occasionally S R O will be down there. Uh as we mentioned, there'll be four other employees that will be uh providing the the instruction and supervision of of those students, along with our administrators occasionally being down there, but our S R O uh will be making their his way down there from time to time.
The other, the other, the other issue like Tara was was talking about. Should they bring their own cars down and they get towed? That's not on us.
No.
It's on them.
Yep.
Yep, that's correct. Um I would like to say that we will be working with our students to take the bus. I mean, we understand.
Called a learning center, right?
Yeah, exactly, so.
Some lessons come harder than others.
What what does that mean? You'll be working with them to take the bus, just encouraging it, or or are you going to require it?
I'm not sure where to look, uh camera, there we are. Uh yeah, we'll be working with them just to encourage, that's the best practice, it's the safest practice to get our kids down there to and from. The other piece is that will be, our students will still be participating in elective classes, and we'll need to go up to the high school anyway, so just utilizing the bus for that transit is a as a better, more efficient way, and it saves on their fuel. Not that it's very far away.
So the the bus will be going in and out um multiple times a day, and kids won't be spending the whole day at this?
I I don't have a specific master schedule at the moment, but there will be times where students need to uh go and engage in their elective classes, and that could be midday.
Okay, and is this um meant to be a permanent home for this, or is it, is it a temporary home?
Uh I'll I'll say that we have a five year lease with the with the building owner. Uh we don't have any intentions to make this temporary, but it's a lease. Uh and so right now, this is going to be our home for the next five years.
Mike, do you have an idea of how often that bus will be coming and going? Is it a few, a few times a day or once or twice a day?
I think it's max is going to be two, maybe, maybe more. We, I don't really have the uh master schedule, so I don't know that answer. I can report back, though.
Okay.
But would you be, would the school district be open to considering requiring kids to take the bus rather than making it optional? Because the biggest hang up to this I see is, I mean, if they're allowed to drive themselves, of course, they're going to want to drive themselves. optional? Because the biggest hang up to this I see is, I mean, if, if they're allowed to drive themselves, of course they're going to want to drive themselves. When you're a kid, that's all you want to do is be in charge of your own coming and going and, and they're going to want to do that. And having anywhere from ten to possibly fifty, if it's fifty kids, extra cars in the downtown core just seems like a really messy, I mean, that's the retail street. I, I, it, it just seems like not a great plan. Plus the staff cars.
I think, uh, the district would be open to, to having discussions about what can make this, uh, the best partnership between the district and the, the city. Um, if it's opportunities to encourage and to get our kids to ride the bus and what that looks like, I, I wouldn't be able to say specifically at this time. It would be a team effort and, and again, how we, how we engage our students to, to take the bus, um, requiring it can get a little tricky. Um, but we, we would entertain that as an option.
Any other questions?
Well, I don't know that it's a question, but I'd say that this is a trial by fire. Try it and see what happens.
I mean, not really, because it'll be if, if, if you try it and it's a mess, it's not like they can rebuild it somewhere else. It's, they're going to be there for five years.
Okay, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, about the buses, I understand you're going to go through the alleyway. The, we all know Broadway is really narrow and I know it says little bus, but it's still narrow. Is, is there any way we can keep the bus off Broadway as much as possible? You know, I come morning out, other not go right down the middle of the city. Because I, when I go, when I go home to, to the school, that, that road is so jammed anyway.
Yeah.
And if you put in a bigger vehicle like another bus or those trucks that think they can squeeze through there, it's not, that's not going to hit off.
I, I appreciate that.
I really recommend, my recommendation would be keep them off the, the main part of Broadway if possible.
So yeah, our buses, we come in from the high school, so likely going down Main Street, um, and so, yeah, so we'll avoid Broadway and we try to do that as much as we can even now.
Okay.
If, um, one other question about the bus, if it's, if it's a short bus, uh, those are usually like, what, twenty to thirty students can fit on them at once? Are, are you in the mornings going to take two? If there's fifty students, are you going to take two runs with the bus?
Well, we, we actually have, we have short buses, we have mid-side bus, mid-sized buses and then very big buses. This probably likely be a mid-sized bus, which we've, um, brought down this alley already once with our transportation director. Uh, it's safe, it's, it can get in there nice and easily, easily. We have professional drivers and, and we don't have any issues getting that bus down there, uh, and to make it through one trip, to answer your question.
Okay.
I don't know if this is really a question for you, but what are the conditions of the conditional use permit and what is the timeframe of one?
Larissa, can you answer that for us?
Yeah, so it looks like the, there is not a time limit for inherently for an approval of the condition yield, conditional use to run out. But it is specified as one of the options that the planning commission could add as a condition of approval. Um, for a conditional use is, um, it doesn't specify a time period, but you could select a time period if you saw that as necessary.
And then you made mention of the variance, um, to allow the bus use, using the access of the alleyway. What does that look like? Is there a timeframe associated with it? And is that something that we can approve right now?
So.
Cause in one of your options, you said you could get building permits with the variance, but is, it seems like there's a little bit of uncertainty there with what that variance looks like.
Yeah. So the way that the variance would work if you all approved the conditions of approval, the way they are written now is that the applicant could start applying for building permits um, and get that internal work going. The risk that they would take by doing that is um, risking if for some reason they were not to get a variance approval, then they would not actually be able to use the site. The process for getting the variance approval through the means described in the code is applying for the variance, which we would recommend the applicant would do right away with us and we could help with that. And then what would have to happen is staff would review that application for completeness. Um, and then we would notice it and we have to give at least twenty days public notice so that people could have the opportunity to comment. And then it would be heard at the next planning commission meeting, which I believe is August twenty-first. And that we talked with Mike, that's the Wednesday before school starts, which we understand is a difficult time uh, timeline. So that is why we proposed this solution where they could start internal construction now. Uh, in terms of approving a variance today, what we recommend is not doing that because um, it will not have been noticed to the public. So that would be a concern in case anyone were to appeal it for whatever reason, um, that would be a liability. Um, and it is just in terms of being able for us to recommend approval. We, we would not as planning staff be able to recommend approval. But you, I think you might be able to make that decision either way. That's a good question. Um, maybe for city manager or attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
There any other questions for the applicant at this point in time?
One question for the gentleman here. If we, what would you like to see in a, in the conditional use permit? Would you like, would you like to see the commis- conditional use permit to be the full five years of the lease? Or could you stand something less than that so you can figure yourself out? And I don't know what your escape clauses in this lease are either, you know, whether or not you're committed to the whole five years or not, you know?
Well, luckily we had a good team working on that agreement. And so I think we have a great opportunity if we needed to term, but, uh, and the owner is, is a great partner as well. Sure. I, I do think the district would be open to a, a limited conditional use to give an opportunity to see how this works, how it's affecting the community in downtown area and, and revisit whether it's a year or two years. But, uh, that, that is an option that we would most definitely consider.
Yeah. I was a bit more favoring something in the two-year range, just to, just to let you get your feet wet, wet and figure it out, you know? Well, I'm sure this thing looks like one thing, it'll turn out being something totally different on the other end of it. So, you know, I, I like the idea generally, generally it's a great idea and it's a good spot. Um, as long as we can not aggravate every other business on that, on, uh, in the area there.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. We might end up calling you back up here if we need you. Is there any member of the audience that wants to speak on behalf of the co- uh, application? Against the client? How about, uh, against the application? Uh, everyone, do we have anybody online that? Okay, doesn't appear that we have anybody that wants to speak on this application. So what we'll do is we'll go ahead and, uh, jump back into the planning commission meeting. And we have a duty to, uh, make a motion, a second and discuss. Uh, and at one point we had some options up there. Larissa, would you mind bringing that back up the screen with all the recommendations? There we go. So we approve with conditions, uh, approve but change or add conditions or deny. Uh, if this gets denied, is it our final decision or does this go to the planning or the city council?
This is your final decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, uh, before we get into that, to go on to the variance part of this.
Sure.
How is a variance different than say a normal planning application where we add conditions? Legally and I guess as it pertains to this. For instance, the, the Lawrence Road, I, I, I think of the Lawrence Road subdivision where we asked that the driveways not go on to Lawrence Road. We made a recommendation to the city council. Would this be much the same as that, as we're just making a recommendation?
A variance specifically is a request to waive a part of the code, like to basically disregard part of the code or do something different than what the code requires. So the condition is more just like something added on top and that's not counter to the code, it's just something extra. But a variance, yeah, variance is like, there's something in the code, we want to do something that would go against that.
If this was a fish market and they were delivering fish twice or three times a day blocking the alleyway, would we be requiring a variance?
We would if there was a specific requirement for fish delivery, but in this case, there's a specific requirement that deals with children, um, entering and exiting the building.
Okay.
But they're not on pallets.
Yeah, it could be.
That's true. You could, uh, make that a condition.
Yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how yeah, which, how this relates to normal business, non-scholes.
Right. So I think Alan, um, said it pretty well that this would not necessarily be an issue if the use was not a school and specifically a school with more than twenty-five students. But because it is, and that's explicitly laid out in the code that that's a requirement, this driveway onsite. Um, eh, the application doesn't meet that standard. Um, so the way to say, yeah, this is not a standard that we meet, nor do we think we need to meet it, is to officially apply for and then get a variance approved. Whereas another business could just, would just not have that standard applied to them.
And does that variance become before this board?
Yes.
I have one question for the city then. Is that still a hundred-year-old water line and sewer line in that alley? Wooden in nature? We have thirteen miles of it in this city.
I, all I know, um.
And, and that does not apply to any of the conditions that would be.
No, I, I'm thinking, are we going to tear that up and ruin their app, application of getting their kids in?
No, we have no plans for replacing any.
There's the answer I'm looking for.
Okay.
Okay. All right, there's our three options. We need a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve with the condition that they require all students to bus in and out.
So moved? We need a second.
I'd have gone with number two, but I guess I'm all right with that, that motion. I'll, I'll second that motion.
So Tara, just to clarify, you're, you're going with all the existing conditions and adding that the, all students must be bussed in and out?
Yeah.
So she is doing number two?
Yes. Okay.
So now we can discuss.
Okay, what about the variance?
We discussed. This is where I get to finally say something. Um, I do want to just acknowledge while the motion is on the table, that while I do not believe that there is a personal conflict between any of my family members, friendship, financial conflict, or any of my social factors, I do just want to formally, uh, declare that I am an employee of the Estacada School District and I just wanted to be forthright in that. And I'm happy to participate in questions. I just want to remain neutral, uh, to respect my chair on this commission.
Thank you.
Now what about the variance? Is that in there?
What we want to do in the motion though, I, I feel the motion's kind of not quite complete, you know, rethink this for a second. Is that even though you could require them to bus the kids in and out of this thing, the variance stall, the variance, uh, uh, conditional use needs to be addressed on that and a time period needs to be set in that motion. Um, uh, like I said, I, I'm kind of in favor. If, if we go this way, then that motion, it would be more complete if we say, okay. Um, everything that you, you, and then, and we give them a two-year period of time to, to, uh, conditional use for a two-year period of time to give this thing a shot, you know?
So, yeah, if I heard you right, you want to do the variance and the conditional use at the same time?
Yeah.
With the provisions specified.
Yeah, with the position, yeah, with the, with the two.
Sorry.
It's not my motion, but I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, right now the motion as it stands.
Yeah, the motion as it stands wouldn't add that.
Yeah.
Sorry, so I'm understanding, um, maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding about the variance. Uh, I thought we, we're, we're saying that we would go ahead with the variance and, but we're just allowing them to legally note, do the notice process. I didn't mean to counter, I didn't mean to be proposing something that is not, that is going outside the noticing process. Um, are, are we? Yeah.
Is that what we're really doing here?
I didn't think we were.
I didn't make the motion. So I guess, I guess the thing we could do is we could vote down this motion and put one in that's appropriate.
I can pull my second, she can pull her motion.
However, we want to do it. We can vote it down too and just.
Yeah.
I can, I can pull it, that's fine. I, but yeah, I, I want to, I, I thought that we were proposing it, what the staff was asking that for regarding the variance.
Yeah, is that, is that? Your, your motion was fine, Tara.
Yeah, your, your.
Oh, okay. Well then, then I'm just going to make it again and I'll add, I'll add the, with the two-year, um, use and the, um, and the requirement that they.
This, this is for the variance only.
People in.
This is not for the variances, this is for the conditional use.
Must receive a variance approval following typical standard notices for blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Oh, the variance is a one.
So that would include your motion inherently.
Oh, yeah, all right.
The variance is there, yeah.
Okay. So then, then yes, I, I'm making that same motion and I'm adding the two-year time period since that was requested.
Are we satisfied with that or is there more to be?
She's amended her.
If she's changed it, now we're looking for a second.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it again.
Okay. Now we need to further discuss.
I, I added the parking thing because I just feel very strongly that, that the idea of having, having tons of cars parked downtown is going to be something that the community is going to be really upset about, you know, whether the neighboring businesses. I, I don't, I don't know how many people you noticed about this, if it's just the ones immediately next door or all the ones in the street, I'm not really sure. Maybe they didn't have time to read it or didn't think that, you didn't understand that there was a possibility that fifty kids would be parking cars down there, you know, whatever, whatever it is. Maybe they don't have, have time to deal with this extra thing. We don't really know, but I, I think they would all feel impacted negatively by there being fifty cars downtown for eight hours a day. And it seems like a, like a good neighbor thing to do to, to utilize this bussing option. And I just, I, I just don't feel like encour- using the word encouraging on it is going to, going to hold a lot of water with high school kids.
I absolutely agree with you. But you know, the reason why we give, uh, like a two-year conditional approval to this is they give the school district a chance to be a good community partner and, you know, figure it out. They're very smart people over there and I think they can, they can arrive at something that's quite useful. Uh, and I'm going to give them the chance to do that, you know?
What, what would be the, what would be the way that that would work? If, if the kids, it's ultimately left up to the kids. I'm just, I'm just not, I'm just seeing, you know, like what would be the possible way that, that the parking would, downtown would absorb fifty or more, more cars?
Tara, I can give some generalities of what our intent is in terms of how we want to monitor parking. Because like, uh, Commissioner Stahl said, you know, we, we, our intent is to be a great city partner. And the whole rationale for sending a bus through the alleyway. And the whole rationale for sending a bus through the alleyway in the first place is to leave as little. As footprint as possible um when going through that, so I just wanted to state that statement. And that's the whole why of using the alleyway in the first place, including child safety. Uh, but what our intent is already um is to encourage as many students as possible to take the bus. If they're riding the public transportation to attend the school. Um, we are gonna make rules uh because the, uh, our, that storefront, I think has four parking stalls in front of it. Uh, our intention is to uh not even have our employees park on the Broadway side of things. We want to make that open for our local vendors and for visitors and other parents and. I mean, aside from just teaching these kids how to read, write and do things in an alternative way. This demographic of kid also has social workers, uh parole officers, uh counselors and other professionals. And they're gonna need to have temporary access to parking as well. And so we're gonna have very strict rules for the few student drivers that do exist. I, I do want to just underline that the typical demographic of this student is not a typical kid that owns their own vehicle. And has the gas money and those types of things to transport themselves uh to and fro. While I do think there will be some student drivers and at least four uh employees who are driving back and forth. Uh, I do believe that the impact will be prioritized towards our social bussing services. Because the majority of these kids are either gonna get bussed in from other districts to our school district. Or they're gonna come onto our high school campus where then they will get transportation down there. So I am optimistic, at least from the beginning, and I appreciate the, at least a couple of years of an opportunity. Just to really measure uh if this is impactful. I think that we'll be able to just take a good look at what that downtown impact is, different than uh if, you know, another business was occupying that space. I actually believe that there's gonna be some growing pains anyway, cuz I think that vacant, that building has been vacant for a decade. Uh, and so just having humans inhabit that building is going to be a change uh all to itself. And I just wanted to recognize that as well. Um, when it comes to the longevity of this building. Uh, we did sign a five year lease, but I actually believe we're going to outgrow this building before uh those five years even come. And so it is possible that this is a temporary process anyway. Because the demand right now in public education for an alternative experience is only growing, not diminishing. And the demand from other school districts to try to send students to different places to meet their needs is also growing. So I actually do anticipate that within a couple of years, we're probably going to even outgrow this building. Uh, which will require us to um obviously look for a different solution too.
Thanks for that, Ryan.
Yeah, you bet. Thank, great, you guys are all asking great questions.
So these are students that are from Barton or Clackamas or anywhere else in the state?
So we're capping it, so uh here's what our intent is to do. And I, I think you guys, everyone would enjoy knowing this from, from just being a taxpayer as well, as we're trying to make this cost neutral. Uh, for our local taxpayer. And so what we're doing is we're saying that this uh, this capacity cannot exceed more than fifty. Forty of these seats are gonna be reserved and available to any student who lives inside the Estacada School District. And then we're gonna save ten seats for ten kids who live outside the Estacada School District. The only difference is, is where if, like, let's use Malala as an example. If Malala would like to, or the, or this, a student from Malala, their parents or the school district themselves says. We think that you are not the right fit for our high school proper. And we'd like you to have the opportunity to go to this Deep Creek Learning Academy, we're gonna charge them a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, for tuition for that kid to come here. And so we believe you can do the math at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, sixty thousand dollars for this type of kid. My, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get there. There's, there's different, there's different levels of, of, that we're serving and we're only serving the sixty thousand right now. So we anticipate these ten seats to fill up with North Clackamas, Malala, Colton. Um, people just kind of around, kind of neighbors to our city. And that revenue should be around six hundred thousand dollars, which will pay in full the rent. Uh, for this space as well as uh paying for uh our employees and our staff. And maybe the need for additional staff as well. So this is a money-making opportunity, which should save costs for our taxpayers. Ultimately allow it to pour it more into our school district and this is a great location for that.
Okay, thanks for that, Ryan. We have a current motion and second on floor. Is there any further discussion? I have some timing concerns. Being a. Person of construction within the city, it took thirteen weeks to get a building permit that I got a week and a half ago. It's August seventeenth. We're talking about a variance and we're talking about things, so I, I. My, my concern is, is that the timeline is already pushed out and that's, that's not a planning commission problem. Uh, neither is the building permit. Um, but. How does the variance lay into that? And what can we? Legally do? Because I don't want anybody dumping money into a project and then have the variance come back and say, no, that's a non-starter, so. Is that something we can discuss at this point in time? Can we give a soft yes? Do we? What does that look like?
So the applicant would need to um. Would need to submit a variance application, they could do that immediately as soon as they're ready to submit that. And then. I mean, as far as giving a pre-approval, uh, actually Larissa, could you go back a few slides where you? I don't remember, you were talking about it, I don't remember if you actually had them up on the slide, but were you talking about the reasons that? Um, a variance um that staff could get behind.
Yeah, I, I don't think I have on the slides, but I could just read it off quick again. There's only a couple core reasons. Uh, let's see, so the big reasons why we would think they would be a good candidate. Would be that we put the school bus plan to the city engineer. Planning or Public Works Director and the Fire Marshal and on their end, they didn't have concerns. So they've already seen that. Uh, this is not a typical school use. Uh, and existing conditions are completely built out for, so, so for them to meet the standard. It would be a large burden. And then uh having, they have an alternative plan which keeps loading and unloading off of the main roads. Which is a great backup.
Can I clarify? Cuz I thought I heard you say that earlier, which was new information to me. Because we're using the alleyway that puts us out of compliance with code. But I think I heard you say earlier that if we dropped kids off on Broadway, we're in compliance with the code.
Hmm, that is not correct. I think uh that might have been mentioned in a question by somebody else. But that is not the case. There is no way with this property for a school. With capacity greater than twenty five students to meet this standard. Because there is no room for an onsite driveway, whether that was somehow in the street or the alley.
Thank you. That's how we interpreted it earlier also.
How many kids are currently enrolled in this school?
There are thirty five kids in there today.
I was hoping you were gonna say twenty four.
Well, but again, it's. It's hard because I understand the black and white rule. These students are electing to do things in an alternative fashion, which includes virtual learning, which includes uh working during the day. Which includes partnerships, like an example of why this proximity is so awesome. Uh, if you remember the old doughnut bakery uh over there, a nonprofit organization called Ant Farm. Uh, just purchased it and all of the remodeling and the doubling in space that's happening right now is through partnerships with Ant Farm. And the Sandy School District and the Estacada School District, so the kids are literally building that with their own hands. And so our proximity downtown to be able to support that and other partnerships are great. My point is, is that the, even though there are thirty five kids enrolled there today. The chances of twenty five kids being in there at the same time every single day is actually quite rare. Uh, and so while the enrollment is gonna save fifty, it's more likely that there's gonna be between ten and twenty kids there. Um, you know, at any given stretch in the day, cuz some kids are gonna go up and participate and inquire. While some kids are gonna be helping our community or doing a job or, or supporting. And so this is where kind of that gray area of interpretation of what, you know. I understand the problem when, you know, if you picture thirteen school buses coming through to drop off four hundred and eighty seven students. Like, that's the whole intent of the code. In this case, most of our movements from kid to kid is actually gonna come on a six passenger van. Uh, that's just gonna come through there and the, you're only gonna see yellow in the morning and in the afternoon. And after that, it's really small car and van work uh as we move our students around, which is significantly less. Um, in terms of the impact.
Anything else Scott?
No, I was, I, I just think the variance was absolutely appropriate for, for this particular use and what they're trying to do here. I think what we're doing is, is, is indeed a startup. You know, and we're going to have issues with it, I'm sure. But that's why we give them the two year time limit, you know, and that way they can figure themselves out. I don't know.
Okay.
I like it like that.
Alright, well. At this point, we've motioned and seconded, so we, we need to vote. So all those in favor of the current motion? Uh, does anybody have it written down? It was a while ago since we said it. It was including all the conditions in addition to adding a two year time limit, I believe, right?
I think the current motion includes the two year time limit, but also um that all students um have to bus down. That's the current motion, I believe.
All those in favor? Said motion. I, I wanna vote yes, I just wonder the. Legitimously, legitimacy of enforcing kids to drive down and the enforcement measures by the city on that. So I'm gonna vote yes for a formality.
Well, I mean, if, if, if people think that's, if we need to talk that through more. Or if, if it's not something that the city can legally require in a variance, then we should.
The only, the only exception that would make this that an impossible ask, and, and I'm saying it out of, out of reality sense is the parents drop off. Uh, and it's gonna be very difficult for us to enforce uh any type of rights of the parents to drop their child off in a certain location. And so I, I think as long as there's a, I mean, I'm fine with the language. As long as there's just some type of acknowledgement that understands that we don't really have control of what parents choose to do. With their child in terms of that, that process. That would be the only thing that we, there's just no way we could guarantee that.
I wish we could write into a, I don't think we, the motion's already been approved. But if we can write into the part where a parent drop off is absolutely.
You, you aren't gonna give parents a listen anyway.
Parents dropping kids off should be fine.
You had that adversity of the school.
Because they're just here and gone.
At the front door. Really? Come on, they aren't going to listen.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Students are one thing, parents are something else, you know, that's the way we have to look at this, you know? Students know, parents, yeah, they can drop their kids off, it shouldn't be an issue.
So do we need to include that language in there or?
I think I just wanted to bring it out to communicate the, the, the definition and understanding, which I, we satisfied right there, so that was great.
Okay.
So with that, I think the motion passes. And now we need to see a variance in August. Be full speed ahead. Is that right? Planning staff, we okay with that?
Yeah, that'd be right. So yeah, as soon as we could get a um application, completed application submitted, is that what it'd be?
And there's not a way for us to, to do that, to okay it without a actual planning commission meeting, is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, you could schedule another meeting sooner if there's a, uh, if we will have a quorum on this. Yeah, actually, I mean, well, no, cuz there's noticing requirements, so there needs to be at least twenty days of noticing. So that puts us out.
August.
I mean, if we got the application tomorrow.
First week in August sometime.
Hmm, no. I think you can, well, maybe, yeah. Thirty one days.
Yeah, I looked and um, I'm sure you're doing the math right now, Alan. But if, yeah, the applicant was able to submit something in the next day or two. We could review it very quickly and then go ahead and notice. Twenty days ahead, it would maybe move the next planning commission hearing or that planning commission hearing up. Like a week or something, so it's a matter of if the planning commission wants to do that and if that would be helpful to the.
Yeah, okay, so I just remembered that there are actually two ways that we notice and that's publishing in the paper. And then we send out notices. We can send out notices like day of. Evelyn, what is the, it's like an eight day lead time for publishing in the paper? It's not twenty days before. So eight days. Yeah, okay. So yeah, it's like twenty eight days. So basically we would need an application submitted immediately.
Get cracking.
Yeah. To make the seventeen of August, or I'm sorry, the twenty first of August.
No easy answers here.
Yeah, we just need to start building walls and uh.
Can you use temporary stuff before you can get yourself going? Temporary walls? I know, it's, it's not a great, a great solution, but it's a.
We'll do whatever we gotta do, we just, we really need to start on time uh there. And the thing that we're very, working through a variance on has nothing to do with the inside of the building. It's literally just the fact that we drive a yellow bus instead of a semi truck.
With children, yeah, it's, it's the, it's the children part of it, that's right.
Yeah. Which is, is fine, so I'm just trying to find, knowing that, do we have the, do we even, could, is the. Is the applicant even eligible? To file for building permits until this has been approved?
Um, well, that was, Larissa, that's in the, that's a condition of approval that you, that they would be able to.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was approved to do so, correct? Okay, perfect.
And it sounds like, I mean, there's staff support and there's broad support on the planning commission. I don't see this not getting approved next month.
Okay, okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay, we're moving along.
Great job, that was a tough one, good job.
Public hearing, B Parkland Solutions Code Amendments.
Alright, let me get into that. I will present. There we go. Alright, so I will be presenting on this ordinance proposal, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero five. Um, this is the Parkland Solutions Phase One. Um, okay, just to give kind of a refresher of the Parkland Solutions project that we've been talking about since twenty twenty three. So at Planet Commission and Parks and Rec meetings last year. Commissioners discuss the need for the dedication of parkland and open space at the time of land division. In order to provide an adequate supply of recreational land for our quickly growing population. And so a joint workshop with um with council and Parks and Rec Committee um in, yeah, in April. Um, staff recommended that the city address this project in two phases. Uh, we presented project and phase timelines and we identified committee, um, commies project and public involving goals. Um, and at that time, the committee decided to move ahead with the phased approach, so that's what we're doing right now. This is um, we're ramping up to the um, the end of Phase One. Um, and then last month, uh, staff briefed the city council. Um, and then last month, uh, staff briefed the city council. And we answered city council's questions and we gathered feedback from them on the draft amendments that you're you've been presented with. Okay, so Phase One, like I said, this is the quick interim code update to require park space in all new subdivisions. And after that's adopted, the plan is to go through a longer, more thorough, community-vetted update to the development code. And the Parks Master Plan and the SDC fee schedule. Okay, and this is the graphic that um was shared at the joint workshop in April. And so today's in the in yellow and with the arrows pointing at it. And so today, planning commission will make a recommendation to city council to adopt, adopt what changes or reject the ordinance. And then, once that's done, uh, staff will revise the amendments as necessary in the in. Planet Commission's report, prepared for adoption. And then city council will hear um, hear your recommendation in August, I believe it's August. Twelve, August twelfth. Um, assuming they they adopt it at that time, um, there'll be a second reading, I believe, in the end of August, and then the code would go into effect in September. So today, I'm just going to give a quick overview of the draft amendments, I'll take any questions you might have. Commissioners can discuss, give feedback and um, yeah, and then need to hear a motion for a recommendation. Okay, so do the review of the amendment, so. Chapter sixteen oh eight definitions is proposed to be amended, added new definitions for community park and neighborhood park. Um, you can, uh, let's see, and then you revise the definition of open space as well to add a detail of what it does and does not include. And then in the Mel Airia Mixed Use Chapter, uh, there's an added requirement. For the provision of parkland according to the standards of um, chapter sixteen dot one one six, which is a section that deals with design standards and improvements for subdivisions. And then chapter sixteen fifty-two on plan development. Clarified existing standards pertaining to parkland and open space dedication. And also added a standard that would allow the city to require an environmental site assessment before it accepted any parkland or open space. And the final chapter that is amended is sixteen dot one one six, design standards and improvements. Um, so in that chapter, uh, then the amendments revise existing code language to require, instead of encourage, the provision of and dedication of parkland. Uh, removes the section allowing for SDC credit for the dedication of parkland. Clarifies the criteria for parkland dedication and basically what standards. Uh, or it creates standards for what type of land is acceptable for park use. And also includes language that would allow the city to require an environmental site assessment before accepting the land. Oh, and it also clarifies land dedication procedures, updates references and data from the Parks Master Plan, which is twenty eighteen. And the official population estimates. It adds a section outlining the criterion process for the payment of fees in lieu of land dedication. And adds a section outlining minimum standards for the dedication of open space. Yeah, that recommendation is essentially that planning commission forward a recommendation to city council to adopt the proposed ordinance. Amending EMC Title sixteen standards regarding regarding parkland dedication. All right, and that was the first part of this presentation, um, or the first part of this hearing, um, yeah, public comment next. And then any questions the commission might have and discussion, and then we'll need a motion.
Planning Commission, any questions?
One, is there a, how do I say this, a percentage of the. Developers' land that is taken for or taken or to be used for the land? Because if one developer has five acres, another one has fifty, it's not the same amount of land that would come in, right?
Right, so there's a whole calculation that goes into that, and the code outlines how that's done.
I mean, it's like one and a half percent of the total land.
It's not, yeah, it's it's based on the maximum density of the land, based on what they are planning to build. And then there's a, you can look, you open up the. The packet here, let's see, if I can find it. If you go into the ordinance document. That's exhibit one. Go to page. See. No, the pages aren't numbered in this one, strange. Well, I apologize, it should be numbered, there's no footer on this one. Um, it is the page with the table in it, you see that little? And so, right above that. Um, under number three, calculation of land required to be dedicated. And that basically explains the process for calculating that. Um, it's not super straightforward, so I went ahead and I made a slide that would kind of give you an idea how that works. And go look at that.
Yeah, let's, yeah, if you got it available.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I calculated, these are just hypothetical. So, yeah, let's say Coyote Ridge, this applied to them, so they were posing two hundred and twenty-two lots for single-family homes. And then two lots for multifamily development, so you can see my calculations under that. So there's two hundred and twenty-two max units for the single-family homes, can you, there would just put one, one on each lot. And then using this table, single-family dwelling, that's three persons per unit. And then there's this kind of constant here that was calculated. Um, point zero zero four two acres of parkland per person, and that figure comes from. Um, data from the Parks Master Plan and and data that was or language that was already in the plan, so that's just updated now. So you multiply those together and then you get two point eight acres for the single-family homes. There's also two tracts that are set aside for multifamily development, and there are ninety-six max units on both of those lots. So for multifamily dwellings, it's two pe- two persons per unit, so multiply those together. Plus the acres per person figure, and that comes up to point eight one acres. So add those together, you get three point six one acres of parkland that's required for Coyote Ridge. Um, and then I broke it down by percentage, um, so three point six one acres out of the total site area, which is fifty-eight point oh five. It adds up to about a little over six percent of the total site. It's a lot of calculation, does that, do you follow? Okay. It's kind of a lot.
Math is the possibly thing I did learn.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it took me a while to wrap my head around it too, I know. We'll go through one more really quick, this is a much smaller lot, it was just twenty, twenty lots. Or that's much smaller development, just twenty lots for single-family homes. So that's twenty maximum units at three persons per unit, and then the acres per person figure, and that's just a quarter acre. So. Um, the percentage of that side area is just under five percent. So just to give an idea of.
So now, if they're doing this, and I apologize, I did not read through this like a.
That's all right.
Are they still paying parks SDC fees?
Yes.
Did the number adjust itself? The SDCs, or no, it's the same same scale, or is it?
It would be same.
Did we ever do a comparison study so far as our SDCs versus everybody else around us?
Um, I think they're much lower than everywhere else's, or maybe not much slower, but they're on the on the lower end of the scale.
We just, we just did that at a recent council meeting, they just reviewed SDCs. I can, I can find that information off the top of my head, yeah, and it and it. You, yeah, okay, I I I can find it.
Yeah, maybe it was the perks that were much slower, Melanie?
Very depending on which one we're looking at, let me look.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
A quarter acre for sixty basic people, if you got three people times twenty, twenty units.
Two lots.
Two lots, yeah.
Alan, can you point me in the direction of where, at what point does this become enacted? Is it five lots?
Um, that is not um specified, that is not specified, so. What what is specified is that council has the ability to require fees in lieu instead of actual land dedication. So in a case like Jen's saying, where it's, you know, two lots, they could, they could dedicate that. And but council could also say, well, we would prefer to take a fee. Um, that was equivalent to the price of a quarter acre instead of a park. So it's up to, it's up to city council whether they want to accept the fees or actually accept the parkland.
And who sets that fee?
Um, that would be set by council.
For the, for the fee in lieu, the, I thought the fee in lieu was calculated based on the market value.
Yeah, the market value, I'm sorry, the market value is set by council. And then it would just be applied to whatever that acreage was.
The SDCs for the park SDCs, um, Estacate is uh, like, right smack dab in the middle. Like Aurora is one of the lowest at twenty-two oh five, and then Lake Oswego charges sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-five for park SDCs. And Estacate is seventy-eight hundred.
And and just to add on to that, remember we went through all of this, uh. The staff did the study of what other cities were requiring for their developments um and dedication of parkland. So we did, we did review all of all of that piece of it, and other other people were requiring. Park dedication or open space dedication as well as having park SDCs.
That's right, yes.
I guess my next question, I I asked it during that March or April co-op meeting. Do we know what an acre of parkland actually costs? Or not necessarily what it's worth, but what it costs?
I mean, I think that would depend on where it was, but yeah, the the fair the fair market value, here I can.
It really depends on whether it's inside the UGB or outside the UGB, so. That's why I said it's cheaper outside the UGB than inside, so.
Yeah, and that would be something that, the fair market value is something that this city council would need to determine. Um, I imagine there's some methodology for that, but I, that's not spelled out in this.
Would it, would it be prudent, do they do, if they're looking for that true market value, do you look to uh realtor comps or something like that?
I'm not, I'm not sure what a realtor.
Yeah, one would assume so.
Compare comparative data for all.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Comparates.
Would give you some kind of a base base run of what property is, what the actual property of the value is. And something that you can actually put paper to and say, okay, this is what we found, instead of, we're just taking a wild guess, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll just read this section about how they determine the value. The fair market value, as determined by the city council on a fiscal year basis, shall reflect the fair market value for an acre of land in the city, in the city. The fair market value shall be in effect throughout the fiscal year and shall be applied to the calculation of all park in lieu fees at the time of the tentative subdivision map approval. At any time, the council may adjust the fair market value determination for an acre of land in the city. In order to more accurately reflect actual real estate market conditions. There are also two other choices, if the developer objects to such evaluation, they may, at their own expense, obtain an appraisal of the property by a qualified real estate appraiser approved by the city. Which appraisal may be accepted by the city council, found reasonable, or the city and developer may agree as to the fair market value. So those are the kind of the three ways.
In our code, what is, what's the breakpoint of subdivision versus partition?
Four, four lots is a subdivision, three lots is a partition.
Are partitions part of this?
partitions, the language is for subdivision.
Oh, I'm sorry, subdivision, partition, or designer application. But where I'm going with this is my concern is, if you have an acre. Half acre, and you want to put four lot, let's call it five, just for conversation's sake. And they have to donate point four two acre per person, which equates to whatever, point zero five acres, and now we have a park. And no longer Portland has a city or the world's smallest park, but Estacate does, and then Melanie and her staff have to take care of it.
Right, but in that case, the city would just require a fee in lieu instead of the park. They wouldn't actually take a chunk of land that was, you know, that.
I'm getting what he's, I'm following what he's saying, almost. It's, it has to have a certain size to create, to start that.
And it's a city's decision.
It's a city's decision, it could be written into the code what the minimum size is.
Well, that would make sense to me.
Yeah.
It takes that question out every time we come into this.
Well, there could be other reasons that the city wouldn't want the land dedicated, maybe it's hard to reach or a weird shape or something that they. That they have a specific reason for not wanting to take care of, and that would be the the chance to ask for a fee in lieu, is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
I think it would be advantageous to uh, limit pocket parks, that's what we call them, limit them because. The city, you know, we we want to keep their services consolidated so we can, we can manage them properly. And if you got ten thousand little pocket parks all over the place, it becomes a logistical nightmare for everybody, you know, and expensive too, you know.
Well, and and the other side of that is, I think they should have a, if it's big enough, it should have parking lots to service the community.
Sure.
Rather than just the four houses on each side of it.
I think the code's probably pretty good the way it stands right now, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, I apologize because I didn't read this and I don't feel alone. Is there something that says it has to be contiguous?
Oh, yeah, I think there is.
And not, we're not just getting all the tracks.
Yeah, so there are standards for what lands, uh, yeah, where are they? What land is acceptable for dedication, where is that? Just mentioned, I should have this memorized, I've been relooking this. Okay. Uh, the following factors shall be used in the choice of whether to accept land or fee in lieu. Yeah, the topography, geology, hydrology, et cetera. Potential adverse beneficial effects, compatibility with the Parks Master Plan. Just going to look, I'm going to do a search for the word contiguous, because I feel like that is.
And while you're working on that, Alan, since this isn't a specific to a property. How is this noticed to the to the community? Ie like the developers that have subdivision applications in currently, are they aware of this?
There are no subdivisions uh, applications in currently.
And so everything that has been approved thus far is status quo.
It's water under the bridge, yeah, it's all done, yeah, but not yet, this would not affect that at all.
While you're doing that, I just wanted to formally thank city staff and city council. You know, this urging really started from the planning commission and its and its urgency. Um, as we talk about growth and capacity uh to really prioritize this. And I know Tara uh virtually too was a loud advocate for that as well. Um, and so I just wanted to recognize and thank uh. Both city staff and city council for taking the planning commission's recommendation, and now it's nice to see actual action. Uh, from that recommendation, which I'm pleased with. Uh, from that recommendation, which I'm pleased with. I also want to echo the sentiment of Chair Wheeler's um purposing and and delineation. Of what constitutes how much versus in lieu. I would support that because again, just to remind of the original intent of the why we were pushing this as well. Was really to um provide a large enough space for kids to engage in play, both athletic. Recreational and all of the above, and so um I, you know, like Commissioner Stahl said, I? The last thing we need are more teeny tiny parks. What we really need is large enough space that can handle the capacity of kid play. Um, and and adult recreation as well. And so I would support some type of language that that would constitute what triggers and in lieu of over? Uh, a a spot, but I also do want to recognize and I want to honor the fact that there is? Flexibility for the city council to, council to make a judgment as well, I'm for that, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thanks. I found the contiguous language and it's basically, it's on the page facing, don't want the table? So under number four, uh, dedication standards and procedure. Uh, and this is the addition part, so this is in the green, the topography soils hydro- hydro- hydro? Hydrography? Yeah, hydrography and related elements much must be of such quality as to create a flat, dry, obstacle-free contiguous space. On at least fifty percent of the total required area in a configuration which allows for active recreation.
Sure. Thank you for finding that out.
Agree with that totally.
Again, sorry for all the questions.
It's fine, go ahead.
Is there something? Once, once we establish a cost for parkland and say we're fifteen years down the road and we have an allotment of funds in lieu of? And we have a great spot to put a park, is there an action that the city can take? With these park fees and say, hey, developer, you got a great piece of ground, this is where Estacada's next city park needs to be. Can, it's probably not going to be in this code section, but is there a mechanism that the city has to say? Yes, you're only required six point five, two acres, but if you put eight point five, we can get two full-size soccer fields or a? Disc golf course on here.
Oh, I see.
And use the funds that we've accumulated over time to offset that.
I mean.
I imagine it would work similar to like SDCs, so that if if they do a? The work themselves, we discount their SDCs and the value of that work, so I imagine it would work similar to that.
Okay.
Yeah, the city could make that suggestion or that recommendation and work with the developer to get that done.
Okay.
I mean, I would assume that that process would have to happen at at the, at the pre-application process. Because generally by the time they come to you guys, they've already done their layout.
Sure. But in in my mind's thinking that the whole reason for this is to not take money from people or or to? Have a pot of gold or something on it, to actually supply parkland, and so if there's an opportunity.
Exactly, yeah.
Or if the mill is brought up, there's, there's ample flat ground and a beautiful pond there and some other things that would be very advantageous, so.
Yeah.
If that's a spot, that's a spot.
Right, but yeah, what what you outlined would be that that would be an option as well.
Okay.
Besides just, you know, the city buying land outright and developing it.
Did you see the, the code section, they came in here and said? I believe I I'm going to paraphrase this because that way I think about it. Is that you take the mill property and if there's any environmental concerns about that? You know, the city can reject it immediately, so that mill property may be a problem, you know, in regards to that. But I think it's the right move to make. So far as any property we take on, we have to, we have to make sure that it's going to be safe and and useful, you know?
Yeah, the the mill property specifically has to do a master plan.
Yeah.
So, so that would be a a chance when they're doing that master planning for us to say, hey, we really want to incorporate a park here. And we have these funds that we've accumulated in the fee of lieu, in lieu that we could help put towards that. Or other options like, we can help you with brownfields applications, there's a lot of ways that we could, we could make that happen.
Okay. Well, uh, we've discussed. I think we need to open to a public uh hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If there's no further questions, Tara, we haven't forgot about you, do you have any questions or comments at this point before we go to public hearing?
No, I'm, I'm uh, I'm psyched this came here and that we're, that we're making progress, so, yeah, thanks, that's my only comment.
Okay, uh, we're gonna open the public hearing, it doesn't look like we have anybody in the audience. Aside from our city manager, would you like to speak on behalf of this? Okay, um, doesn't look like there's anybody else online, so? As quick as we open it, we'll close the public hearing.
Yeah.
And now we have options to make a motion and a? Approval of the city council, I believe.
That's right, yeah, recommendation.
Alan, would you mind bringing the options back up for us? There we go.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I recommend uh that the planning commission, uh, that the council adopt? The ordinance with the findings as presented by staff.
I second.
Moving second, any discussion, further discussion? Doesn't appear that there's any, let's go ahead and vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Yes.
Host carries. Okay. So this will go to the council August twelfth.
That's right.
At six. Anybody feels passionately about it, feels like they can convey a message for the planning commission? Please attend. Public comment, doesn't look like we have any, commission comments? I had a brief conversation with Rick Hawks, did we ever follow, did he follow up? With everyone, I know he mentioned he was going to, or Melanie? Yeah, if you could, that would be great.
Okay, I need to call uh Rick back, but from what I understand, he's going to go ahead and resign, he has objections to the code of conduct. As far as signing that, um, and so I'll call, he talked to Council Strobel. Um, I talked with him briefly, but I'll call him back again, but it looks like he's going to offer his resignation for that.
Okay.
So, we do appreciate, I can't remember how many years he's been on the commission, but I appreciate his service.
Thanks for that update, yeah, and I, I, the conversation I had with him was similar, that he wasn't wanting to sign the code of conduct, so.
Does, does anyone know why, or is that something that we can know, or?
Sure, I I think you could feel free to reach out to him and and talk about it, but um also just that, um? I think he was, wanted to be a very cautious that um about his First Amendment rights, and he felt that that might impede. Um, his First Amendment rights, so? Uh, I feel like the? I feel like the code of conduct is pretty generalized, um, as far as? You know, especially based on the last four years that we're coming out of. Um, it's a good reminder about how we interact and sometimes there's hot topics and there's, there's things that hopefully we don't always all agree. If we always all agree, that I, to me, would indicate something's wrong. And so we need to be able to to discuss with each other, discuss with the community, um, you know, what our? Beliefs are and how, what our values are as we're going forward and come to conclusions on that, and the code of conduct is meant to help? All of our commissions and committees and boards to be able to do that, and so? Um, I, I don't necessarily agree, but I do appreciate Rick's perspective on that, and so that's where he's at. And and again, feel free to reach out, so I'm not putting words in in his mouth for him, but that's the way I understood it.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Uh, and then as far as the appointment goes, that's a, a city council mechanism, is that right? If if he does choose to vacate?
Yes, that's right, we'll have to, we'll open up the, put an announcement online and. What, once we get his official resignation, we'll open it up online, we leave it open for twenty-one days, then then the potential applicants will come before your? Board for you to interview, and then you make a recommendation to council, and generally council will just accept your recommendation.
Right. Thank you.
I got something.
Yes.
Okay, I I agree with Richard on the, the, the code of contact. The many years this has been on here, I do give my opinion and she's right. Not everybody's going to take my opinion, or I take his, whatever. So, I, I? I took my time to sign that thing. And I signed it, I really didn't want to. Do I have anything to hide? No. Do, am I planning? To anybody else? No.
Maybe.
You know? But the whole point is? You, you should, you should be able to express your opinion. Without worrying about that paper's going to get you in the butt. You know, so, you, you, you're going to get in trouble anywhere it goes in life, this life anytime. Whether we have kids, I don't know, but anyway, just so you know, I did sign it, I wasn't? Pleased after I did, but I did.
I would appreciate it if anybody, if you review that code of conduct, if there's specific verbiage in there, or if there's any particular section. That seems like it oversteps, I know that as a planning commission, you also had the um? The guide, the planning guide, the handbook, right, that was like rules for how planning commission operates, what you operate by. Um, so you had two things, most, all the other commissions just had the code of conduct. But if there are specific sections of that or particular verbiage that is disturbing or that you think oversteps, I would be interested in that, because I think as a whole? Um, it, I don't see any problem with it, I did forward it on to the city attorney to retake a look at it. But if you want to weigh in on any particular comment or verbiage, that'd be great.
Coming from a big corporation, that was the shortest one I've ever seen, usually they're about ten pages and I never gotten through one of them. I'm going, you know, who cares about any of this, just sign, go check the box and move away.
Is that something the League of Oregon Cities puts out, or how does that, who, where did that originate from?
It, the council, it was under direction of the council, I can't remember where we got, I think it was City of Sandy that had the, like a template that we worked off of. Um, because we have to, we really invent something if it's already out there in a couple of different places, and I, I do believe when I looked back, it was City of Sandy that had that. And we just um modified it a little bit. Yeah, council looked at it. Council adopted it. At one of their regular meetings. Like two years ago, this is not a, not a new thing.
Right. Okay. Uh, so we have a planning commission meeting in August, uh, for variance, I believe.
That's right.
And a few other things.
And you said that was going to be August twelfth?
Wait first.
Is there a question?
Was there a meeting set for August twelfth or something?
That's the city council meeting. Okay, so we're the twenty-first for us. Evelyn will be in touch with you, she's good at that.
Hopefully at that time, you, you will all also have the water master plan to review.
Yeah, yesterday, I figured it'd be six months to get there. We'll figure out if we can find any more wells around here.
So, uh, just being that we're down, one with Rick, and then Richard just knows, know that he might? Possibly not be here on the twenty-first, depending on how things are going.
We will, we'll see how my health is improving.
I'm going to go fishing, right?
I'm doing that tomorrow, I am not missing it now.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Okay, that's adjourned. Three forty-five.